All this meeting in order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is three proclamations. The first one I'll read is Fair Housing Month. If any representatives want to meet me at the podium. Whereas, fair and equal housing is a right guaranteed to all Americans. And whereas, the principle of fair and equal housing is not only a national law and policy, but a fundamental human entitlement. And whereas, all citizens have the right to live where they choose within their financial means. And whereas, people must not be denied housing because of race, color, religion, sex, national origin, handicap, or family status. And whereas, the Town of Silver City acknowledges the importance of assuring fair and equal treatment to all citizens. And whereas, the Town of Silver City, the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, and the Regional Association of Realtors will participate in the Home and Garden Expo and supply fair housing information to attendees. And the town will display a fair housing exhibit at the City Hall Annex. And whereas, the Town of Silver City, the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, and the Regional Association of Realtors is committed to highlighting the Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every American of their right to fair housing. And whereas, the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics commits all Realtors to providing equal professional services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, sexual orientation, gender identity, and national origin. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as Fair Housing Month. Thank you, Mayor. The next proclamation is Start by Believing Day. Is there any representatives? Whereas, the Town of Silver City shares a critical concern for victims of sexual violence and a desire to support their needs for justice and healing. And whereas, the Town Council has been advised that current estimates suggest no more than 20% of sexual assaults will be reported to law enforcement. And less than 3% will result in conviction and incarceration of the perpetrator. And whereas, the Town Council has been advised that research documents that victims are far more likely to disclose their sexual assault to a friend or family member. And when these loved ones respond with doubt, shame, or blame, victims suffer additional negative effects on their physical and psychological well-being. And whereas, the Start by Believing Public Awareness Campaign, a program of Inviolence Against Women International, is designed to improve the responses of friends, family members, and community professionals so they can help victims to access supportive resources and engage the criminal justice system. And whereas, the Town Council, in concert with the Silver City Police Department, HeLa Regional Medical Center, Sexual Assault Nurse Examiners, and Silver Regional Sexual Assault Support Services, support the Start by Believing Public Awareness Campaign. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2015 as Start by Believing Day.
Hi, my name is Stormy Plam, and I'm from HeLa Regional Medical Center with the same program. I'm the coordinator there. And this is a very important program. It kicked off nationwide last year. The Governor, Susanna Martinez, kicked it off in December of last year for the state of New Mexico. And I'm very happy to say that we have Grant County totally on board with this program. And it's important for every community member to realize when somebody discloses something like this to you, you need to support them and believe them. I found the most bizarre stories are the truest stories. And these kids especially need it. And we are very fortunate to have a program here in our same program where the kids don't have to leave anymore. We can handle from zero to 100 years old now, acute and delayed. And we can take care of them. And SAS is our wonderful advocates. They help them through the emotional healing process as well. The District Attorney's Office, law enforcement, is amazing in supporting these programs. And we thank you guys for letting us do this.
The last one is for Continental Divide Trail. Whereas, in 2014, the Town of Silver City Council issued a proclamation recognizing the honor of Silver City's designation as the first gateway community of the Continental Divide Trail. And whereas, the Town of Silver City in Grant County continues to provide exceptional outdoor recreational opportunities, including walking, bicycling, hiking, and horseback riding, which appeal to an expanding number of residents and visitors from far and wide. And whereas, engaging in regular outdoor exercise is known to improve health and well-being. Our trails are beautiful, valuable, and freely accessible. They represent an integral part of daily life for education, fun, and fitness. And whereas, world-class trails, including the Continental Divide Trail, enhance the quality of life for our citizens, increase tourist activity in the area, and offer an attractive recreational resource for young and old. And whereas, many educational activities, including workshops and seminars, the trail work, as well as amusement and industry events, are scheduled for April 2015 to celebrate and promote the trails and greenways of Silver City. And whereas, the Continental Divide Trail Days Event are a chance to increase public awareness of the town's extraordinary trail opportunities and diverse outdoor recreational activities, proclaim the importance of our local and national network of trails and greenways, and celebrate the kickoff of the 2015 CDT Through Hike Session. And whereas, we encourage residents to participate in the scheduled CDT Trail Days activities. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Maronis, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim April 10th through the 12th, 2015, as Continental Divide Trail Days 2015.
Hi, I'm Nancy Cliff. I am grateful that you issued this proclamation. And just wanted to kind of sketch out real briefly the schedule of events. On Friday, the start of the program is 5:00 at the Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery. There will be book readings, and giveaways, and drawings. And at 8:00, there will be a band, so that's sort of the start of more fun Friday night. Saturday from 10:00 to 3:00, there's a Gear Expo and organization showcase, including seminars, booths, gear testing, and exploring the sights, towns, and tastes of Silver City. Saturday evening, the Big Ditch Cricket Dance Benefit is at the Elks Club, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. Sunday, we have a CDT Volunteer Trail Work Party and a CDT Self-Guided Excursion. Anyone who's interested in registering to volunteer on Sunday could go to www.continualdivitrail.org, Continental Divide Trail, all one word, lowercase, and /news/CDTTrailDays. Or you can email at volunteer@continentaldivitrail.org. I think it should be fun for everyone. It's the kickoff for the through hiking season, and so there'll be some visitors, as well as, we hope, lots of citizens come out and enjoy things. Any questions? Come and take part. It will be fun. Thank you.
Next item is public input. Mr. Ortiz, you've signed up for the ordinance. Would you want five minutes during public input? Or would you rather speak? We'll allow public input during the discussion. And for public input, we have five minutes. I'll give you a little bit of a warning when we get to one minute.
My name is Ben Ortiz, and I live on Cheyenne Street. I am not opposed to taxes. Taxes are a privilege to pay for living in a structured society. Taxes are a functional government, federal, state, and local. Individual citizens are the base for all tax-paying purposes. I support expenditures for basic government public services such as public safety concerns or public safety infrastructures planning and fiscal monitoring. Taking taxing revenues require constraints and sound management policies to control itself and function responsibly. And that doesn't mean that we should take the leadership from the state of the federal government as being role models. And the taxpayers are becoming very annoyed by some of these selfie representatives. I am opposed to how some tax revenues are appropriated. That lack of fiscal management have allowed governments to bankrupt taxpayers and grow through extensions, boards, commissions, committees, and such groups as needed. Elected officials must represent their constituents, thus taking oath to uphold good government. Big this does not constitute good government. Lobbyists, money, and interest may not represent taxpayers. Elected officials, responsibilities are immense and require much time and diligence. Beware of self-servers and venture interests as your decisions may sunset in time and others do not. But change is subject to change. Change is occurring and must be met for better solutions. There is less money to spend. The choice is harsh, but it must be met. More taxes may not be the answer. I am not making more money, so I have no choice but to cut back. Government has its citizens. I don't have any options. I have to manage, and so does government. This state cannot bear its responsibilities, and we're seeing this at present time. Regroup and review before jumping. Human resources can study and review. Institutions who train management leaders can provide needed direction, as does time to reflect. Abundance of history is available as to our present situation. Time to huddle and listen to taxpayers' pockets. They have been depleted by enhancements, grant riders, and tax breaks. Taxpayers do not have money. And as a result of this, the proof is in the pudding. Look at our situation. Look at the state government, the federal government. Review and study as to where the money is going. Our present situation did not happen overnight. Individually, I do not have tax write-off privileges or tax breaks. I am the consumer that finances and drives this economy. Consumers are the ones that drive. We've been misled in a lot of respects, and that's misleading. And I was here asking that maybe a reprieve or a no vote would be appreciated. The people that I have to talk to, people my age, are not in favor of this ordinance. So I ask that, if you would please, not consider it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Mr. Torrieta. Notice of Values.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is Raul Torrieta, and I'm your Grant County Assessor. And I would just like to take a little bit of your time. First, I would like to thank my staff. Mr. Trujillo, she's my senior appraiser. And I do have Carrie Powell. She's one of my appraisers. And what has happened, in January 1 of 2015, we had a backlog of about 600 deeds. And we did not have an in-house mapper, so we actually pretty much did it ourselves. We got caught up since March 23rd of 2015. And now we're on the process of restructuring the assessor's office and bringing in a parcel mapper in our office and also a title examiner. So I'm just doing a lot of, you know, moving people around and hiring people, not only appraisers, but also, you know, title examiner and so on. It gives me great pleasure that I do have a good staff, and I appreciate Grant County for their patience and their confidence in the assessor's office. One other thing that I would like to say is that we won't be mailing out the notice of evaluation until May 1st. I actually got an extension from Property Tax Division. And like I said, our target date's going to be May 1st. And I will be showing more in detail through the CATs on reporting from the assessor's office on a separate reporting on my own in the assessor's office. So stay tuned to that. It won't be the Raul Torrieta Assessor Show, but, you know, it's going to be, you know, giving you the information of what's going on. I do chair the Grant County Trails on a different note. And I'm happy to see the CDT having their first annual Sunday. And we're looking forward to doing it on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And Sunday, April 12th. And I'm asking you guys, as elected officials, to join us on the Grant County Trail. We're going to be doing our hike at Gomez Peak at 1:00. It's going to be about a four-mile hike. And it would be nice for the city to bring some, you know, to come out here and hike with us. So Alex, you've been put on your boots, all right? Scavron, you too, all right? So I'll see you there on 1:00 on the 12th of April for the Grant County Trails, all right? Gomez Peak. Thank you very much. And if anybody has any questions, I would entertain anything. Thank you. Thank you very much. And you guys have a wonderful evening, okay? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is council comments. Council Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. During my run for reelection, several, and during the conversations with a counselor that I did in January of this year, several things came up. One of the most pressing for District 1 because of the number of burglaries that were occurring was door-to-door peddling. And after a conversation with the town attorney, he has some information to educate not just only our residents, but also the council and other folks about our current ordinance on peddling and what the licensure actually does and does not permit. So I would like to ask the mayor that, if he could, please call upon Mr. Scavron during reports so that he could go through that and explain that.
We'll do something during reports.
Yeah, thank you.
Council Emmett Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two things. The first is that I want to thank all of the citizens and the expert professionals who attended my conversations with counselor, mine and Council Ray's conversations with counselor, because Council Ray was there. He didn't speak as much as me, but that's kind of his nature. It was really a lively and informative discussion on vacant buildings. And actually, I want to acknowledge the assessor's office because a lot of the information that I got doing research ahead of time, I got online from the assessor's office. So you can look up and see who owns a building. That's public information. And I also want to thank the people, the citizens who volunteered to work with me going forward on any kind of continuing work. The second thing I want to say is that I used to teach, and I taught my students to always make decisions based on evidence. And so I did a little bit of research on the various aspects of plastic bags. Forgive me if you've heard this before. But, you know, plastic bags haven't been with us forever. It was really not until 1973 that the high-speed manufacturing process for thin film bags was developed. And it really wasn't until after 1980 that thin film, single-use plastic bags began to take over the real retail industry. Goodness, stumbling on words. Contrary to some urban myths, it was not environmentalists who championed the use of plastic bags, but rather, that real push came with a series of advertisements from Mobil Oil because they were seeking another market for polyethylene. While single-use bags feel free to consumers, they actually come at a cost. We see those costs of single-use thin film bags in the litter of bags blowing in the breeze in our landscape. And they are close to us, but central costs in terms of landfill permitting issues. There are other costs, too, like the use of fossil fuels to make those bags. 12 million barrels of oil are required to produce the single-use thin film bags that we consume annually in the United States. Most bags have a deadly impact on marine life. And, you know, they do not biodegrade. Even if it looks to us like they're disintegrating in our New Mexico sun, those bags are actually not biodegradant. They're just breaking into smaller pieces of plastic. In fact, in 1993, the same Mobil Oil company was ordered by the Federal Trade Commission to stop touting that their bags were degradable, noting that such language misled the consumer to think that they were, in fact, biodegradable. They are not. So the thin plastics that those bags are composed of take a very long time. Some estimates are about 400 years to break down into less harmful components. Now, the goal of any ordinance banning thin film, single-use bags is to transition consumers from those bags to reusable bags. In over 150 municipalities in 17 states, there are one or more ordinances limiting or banning single-use plastic bags. So in California, there are 85 municipalities alone in California. So we have a lot of precedents to look at and from which we can learn. And here's what we know. Case studies of a number of municipalities yield three major findings. Those ordinances, the extended film, single-use bags, coupled with fees for paper bags, but having recyclable bags available to give away or sell are the ones that are most successful in converting consumer behavior so that they start bringing their own bags to the store. In the long term, local economies, meaning retailers and consumers, are not negatively impacted in the long run. There are startup costs in terms of replacing the types of bags, and some consumer confusion and irritation at the beginning, but that diminishes over time. It takes on a range of 10 to 15 months for people and retailers to adapt. So they know that it takes about a year for consumers to get into the habit of bringing their own bags. It takes a while for store managers and personnel to learn how much to help put into a reusable bag so that the individual consumer can be comfortable carrying that. So here in Silver City, being as we are only in our third month of use of the plastic bag ban, and we are still learning, I beg us all to be patient with ourselves, with the stores, and with everyone as we learn how to take reusable bags to the store and fill them up the right amount.
Thank you. Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm asking the public to see if they can give our council some feedback as I have been asked numerous times to bring back the banning of cell phones. So that way, we, as a town council, can hear what the public is for or against banning cell phones. That's all. Thank you.
Council Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have to, well, actually, to ask for the public is, now that the weather is changing and it's getting warmer, just be aware when you're driving of people on skateboards, parents pushing strollers, bicyclists, and motorcyclists. Please, tear the road. Thank you.
Anybody need round two? Moving on to approval of the minutes. Council Emmett Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting of March 10th, 2015. Mayor, a second to motion is due.
We have a motion a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, March 10th, 2015. All those in favor?
Aye.
Being opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is staff reports. Robert, would you mind updating us on what you found on panhandling?
Yes, on panhandling, it's peddling. Peddling, sorry. Fundamentally, the peddlers have to be licensed to operate within the town. And that means walking, operating on the public rights of way. It does not, so they come in, they file an application. If you were an existing business, you would file for a business registration or a business license. For peddlers, because they're itinerant, they apply and get, they file an application and then they get a license to operate within the town. There are two basic areas that the peddlers sell to. One is commercial businesses. Now, commercial businesses are open to the public, so they can walk into a public business unless there's a sign that says, "No peddling, no soliciting." Then they can't even enter the commercial establishment to hawk their wares. In the absence of that sign, they can walk into a business and then try to sell or pedal. But if they're told to leave, they have to turn around and immediately leave. Failure to do so, that's a withdrawal of consent for them to be there. Failure to do so makes them a trespasser. Now, the second area is going to private residences. Unless a peddler is expressly invited to go on private land, the license gives him no authority to go on private property. Period. So, as a story that the counselor was telling me is that there are some peddlers walking around in her district that say that they have a license, therefore, they can enter private property, knock on the door. And then when the person answers the door, they stand there and argue with them. That is not appropriate behavior. It's unlawful behavior. First of all, on private residences, in the application that the peddler fills out, it states, "You are not to enter upon non-business private property." That's about as clear as you can get. So if you have somebody, if you're in a private residence and someone comes to walking on your property, they're already violating the law. When they knock on your door, that's, they're still trespassing. When you answer the door and say, "Get off my property," if they don't turn around and immediately walk away, I would encourage the residential occupant or owner to call the police. Before calling the police, I get a card from the peddler. And if you have a cellphone, take their picture. take their picture. So just to clear up, there's an apparent misconception. A peddler's license does not authorize any trespass upon private property. Private property is private property. Now, if you want to take one extra step on private property, that would be to put up a little tab that says no soliciting. Then it's not necessary, but it's a good idea. On businesses, unless you want to have peddlers coming into your store, I'd also put up a sign saying no soliciting, no peddling. That immediately ends their implied right to enter a commercial business. A business, a commercial business is open to the public. It's a different environment than a private residence. So they can walk into the store unless there's a sign that says no soliciting, but when they're told to leave, they have to turn around and leave. If they don't, they're trespassing. On private property, they shouldn't even be there. Now, there is an exception. It has to do with locally-based organizations, Girl Scouts, some local fundraising, that's permitted. And that's permitted on the basis of a public policy that says these people are our own neighbors, so we can hold them accountable for their behavior. But the peddlers that get licenses and seek to use that license to invade private property, that's a criminal offense. People should call the police. Don't argue with them. Don't follow them out. And don't get violent. That was a peddler trying to sell me something.
That was the owner of his dog.
Thank you, Alex. The program in my phone.
Council Beeson.
Thank you, Mayor. If I remember correctly, the ordinance also says that they cannot use the telephone. These peddlers, they get the licenses, if I remember correctly.
Well, there's another provision that has to do with telephone, use of telephone prohibited. That's Section 10, 141. It shall be unlawful for any peddler to use the telephone for the peddling of goods, wares, merchandise, or services, or the solicitation of funds, or any other activity connected to the business of peddling or soliciting.
Of course, this pertains specifically to the peddlers within the town with the licenses.
That applies to everybody.
Well, it doesn't really necessarily stop people from calling from out of state to sell you something, but...
There is a do not call list with the federal government.
Correct. There is a do not call registry, but sometimes it seems that your number does get dropped off. Yeah, so, but I think it's really, I appreciate you clarifying that for us, Mr. Scavron, because I think it's really critical for folks to understand that there really isn't, per the ordinance and per the license, no real door-to-door peddling with a license. Of course, as you said, nonprofit organizations, local ones, Girl Scouts, things like that, that's different. They don't even need to get licenses. We're talking about people that say, "Well, no, I have a license to do this." Well, actually, they don't. So at least helps folks know that the current ordinance is, as it is right now, works, and we just have to make sure everyone knows about it. So I think one of the things I like to see is that it actually get posted, this information from Counselor Scav, I mean, from, well, Councilor, he is a counselor, not, a different kind of counselor, from the attorney, Mr. Scavron, be posted on the town's website so folks can know that the license itself does not permit them to enter private property that's not a retail station.
We could also put on the motion paper column as well.
That would be good, and if we can run it for a little bit, not everybody picks up the paper. So anything we could do to put this out, so hopefully the papers are taking note and it'll also be in the papers, because I think it's critical. There's been so many complaints from my folks in my district about this, and even one that came in today about someone trying to peddle upgrades for particular satellite companies but didn't have a vehicle nor had, nor did they have any sort of card. And they did, those residents, because they were suspicious, actually called Central Dispatch, non-emergency number, to report it, so.
Like I commented, get a card from them, and don't hesitate to call Central Dispatch because even if the police does not come out, the record of the call and the subject matter of the call will be valuable down the road.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
On the county, I just wanted, James sent a report with me on the very little happenings in Santa Fe this year. First House Bill 2 passed, and included in that bill was $100,000 for a jail diversion program here at the Grant County Jail, which would be used for a special program to help keep those that have been put in jail to monitor and to help them find ways of becoming repeat offenders. So it's a new program that we're looking forward, and I've been working with the county and the state, and we're gonna, hopefully, it'll be a program that will be beneficial to everyone. There was also House Bill 236, which was a decrease in severance bond capacity that went, basically went to the Glorious Initiative and Glorious Board Initiative funding, as well as to the tribes, the reservations. Those programs that have been set up, actually, we're gonna be awarding some funding that we got from that same program. So it is decreasing some of that funding that will go to the program that we're seeing here tonight. There's also a bill that passed that actually protects counties and municipalities. Basically, there's a situation right now where, I'll give us as a perfect example. Back when Hold Harmless started, there was one of the major retailers that was not reporting properly, and which meant we were not getting the proper amount of hold harmless that we should have. After Anata was done, it was identified that we actually were short-paid by the state because of the hold harmless, and we ended up receiving in one month over an extra million dollars in payment. But there have been many instances on the reverse, where there's been actually communities who, it's been identified that they were overpaid over time, and their entire grocery receipts has been withheld to repay the overpayment. And this happened to Estancia, I believe, they were overpaid by a million dollars, and it put them in a situation where they didn't receive grocery receipts for like two or three months. And as municipalities, that's our recurring revenue stream, unlike counties that get the big chunks of money twice a year and then grocery receipts monthly, some grocery receipts monthly. Municipalities' primary source of revenue is grocery receipts on a monthly basis. So this helps us correct it, so where that they can only recoup a certain portion on a monthly basis until it's completely recovered, so that way the municipality is not negatively There was nothing done on the bills on the ASWA situation. There were three bills, I believe, and none of them went anywhere. And there were five hold harmless bills, and none of them were even heard, well, one of them was heard and tabled because they said that they were going to listen to them all at one time. And I believe, I spoke with Senator Morales, and he said that there was no support to pass any of the bills, so they just decided, I believe they're gonna send an interim committee to try to come up with something that might work. But what that means is that hold harmless is going to go into effect, and we will start to see the negative impacts of hold harmless this next fiscal year. It's around, for the town of Silver City, it's about $110,000 compounded annually. It's not $110,000 this year, $110,000 next year. It's $110,000 this year, $220,000 next year, $330,000 the following year, $440,000, and so on, up to about 1.6. And actually, with inflation, it gets up into 1.8, 1.9 million a year loss. So those are some of the things that did happen. So now it's up to the governor to sign, or line item veto, or it's in the governor's hands. I did speak with Senator Morales, he was gonna be here today, but then he thought that it might be better for him to wait until he sees what is actually signed, and that way he would like to give a comprehensive report on what happened at the session this year. Also, the grand opening for the Disabilities Resource Center will be happening now in April. That's the building that we've been working on up by the REC Center for the different programs, and so that final is gonna be getting underway. Do you have any questions on anything else that you might?
Council Beeson.
Thank you, Mayor. If I remember correctly, the one that protects municipalities, if there's a loss of GRT, they can't go back more than three years, so it's not like they can recover all of it. And if the municipality makes a, well, a sort of a counterclaim, that's not really what they call it, within a 90-day or 30-day period, then it's only recoverable to 30%. So it doesn't completely strip municipality.
It's 30% per year.
Up to three years, though, right. So it's not like they're gonna go back and reclaim 10 years, 20 years, yeah.
So that is beneficial, I mean, it's not beneficial to communities, but it keeps us from being slammed. And there have been a few communities that have been really negatively impacted by that situation.
And I think Santa Rosa became $2 million in debt because of that same sort of issue.
But it can bankrupt the community, because say, for instance, we lose, say, $3 billion, it's a third of our revenue, and that means we can't pay our bills. It means we lay off 30, 40% of our staff just to get through the year. But the problem with the way it was set up was they can take the money now, and you're just out of luck, you're living on reserves. And we're not required to keep the huge reserves because of the fact that we receive grocery receipts, grocery receipts are on a monthly basis.
And if you, I know that it's already been in the papers, but if you could briefly talk about the capital outlay, the fact that there wasn't a bill, and that we, what that means for the municipality for the next year?
Well, there was different versions of that capital outlay bill that was presented. I guess I don't really want to get into the back and forth of why it happened, but the basic final result is many municipalities within Grant County, and the state of New Mexico, and Kelly's, will receive no capital outlay this year. We were slated to receive some money for Little Walnut to help us with some of the work that we're gonna be doing there this year. So we're gonna keep doing it, we're gonna keep working on it, but that money's gone unless they have a special session or something, which I don't know that it will happen. With that, just to give an example of what capital outlay has done in previous years, that helped pay for some of the lights at the ball fields, that paid for, we've got a little bit for the concession stand right now. It helped build HMS, the hospital. It helped the county purchase the Business Accomplishment Center. It's helped us do many different roads within Silver City sidewalks, many, many, many different projects over the years. Pope Street was one of the projects that was, when we did Pope Street, that was funded about 60% from capital outlay. So those are the different types of things that we start losing that we, out of when capital outlay doesn't come, and it's taxed dollars on this set of Santa Fe. We're just trying to get some of that back and put it in our economy so that we can just keep those dollars revolving and earning money, creating jobs and doing those things.
So in terms of the fact that unfortunately no one received capital outlay, you said that we would continue to work on a project on Little Walnut, but that does kind of put a kink in it in terms of we don't have that allocation to continue. So in some respects, what we're going to be talking about tonight, the municipal grocery receipts tax would assist in some measure with completing the project in the absence of capital funds.
Yes, yes, these things are important. It's basically coming down to, we have to take care of ourselves.
Right.
We can't depend on anybody else anymore.
Little Walnut desperately needs work completed on it. I mean, I know that.
I get complaints of almost.
So do I, and I think every council member does, so whether we live in District 2 or not, I know that we do hear about it. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else? Any other reports, chief? Ms. Mackey? This is Mackey? Moving on. You guys want this next agenda? You want to take a break?
Yeah.
Council Beeson.
Mr. Mayor, I want to for a short break. Mr. Mayor, a second motion.
We have a motion a second for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Being opposed, we're in recess. Call this meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda, the elephant in the room. Under unfinished business, approval disapproval of ordinance number 1237, an ordinance adopting a municipal grocery receipts tax in the amount of 1/4 of 1%, 0.25% for general fund operations. I'm gonna try to stick to a little bit of an outline here. I'll present, I'll open the discussion, I'll allow Alex to articulate maybe some add-ins, some specifics and details that I missed, and then I'll have the counselors talk about some of their thoughts and their ideas, and some of the public input that they've received directly. Then I'll open it up to the public and allow for further communication and dialogue from the public, and then we'll bring it back to the counselors for final direction to see where they want to go with this. This is one of those, as I've spoken a number of times, this is one that I really put off a long time, because this is definitely against my grain, my nature. I'm usually quite opposed to tax, but we find ourselves in a very peculiar situation. And generally, what we've seen over the last few years is the lack of repayments on a number of our grants through the state has really put a huge monkey wrench in our cash flows. So even though we're slightly down on our receipts, we're fairly close to our budget, and we've been fairly close to our budget over the last few years. But that being said, if we are waiting 90 days on the good side and up to a year on the bad side to get reimbursed on some of our grant projects, that means that we are not executing the budget as intended. It means that we can't fully staff all our departments in order to float grant obligations that the state has given us. And in many cases over these last several years, the bulk of those grants are not aesthetic or, you know, fun, or just grants that we take on a whim. These grants are, in large part, are those infrastructure grants that are actually maintaining our roads, allowing us to repair and replace sewer on major projects. It's allowed... It's allowing us to actually continue to move forward in ways that we would not be able to. And so we have to continue looking for these grants or the further degradation of our infrastructures is going to be where we're not economically viable. So we definitely need to do this from, at least we need to visit this and debate it and discuss it and really see the importance. And it's, at this point, I really feel, as I said before, that I'm probably a year late in bringing this forward, but we do need to talk about it. A lot of the comments that I've received, and I've been oddly surprised, I'm very, very surprised at a lot of the input that I've received from the public. It's amazing how many citizens have come up to me unsolicited by myself to tell me we need those services you guys are providing. We need that library. We need the museum. I go there. I've been going there since I was in my youth. It's been important in my schooling. It's important to our culture. So a lot of, I've been, like I said, oddly surprised at a number of, a lot of our older citizens who are in many cases on fixed income and in many cases quite conservative, quite fiscally conservative, and they wanted to make it a point that I knew that they need us to be able to continue meeting those needs that we've been serving and illustrating to me that it is worth the extra tax for them, for us to continue operating at the level we've been operating at. So, and that is in the book. There have been a few concerns, though. There are concerns. Probably the biggest concern that I've seen and one of the concerns that I fear the most is, you know, we are adding cost to our daily purchases. So as I look at that, and we have to weigh cost versus benefit, so I do want to fully understand and look at all those costs. So as I look at those costs and we look at our gross receipts, how it affects a lot of our individuals, especially those on fixed incomes, what we have is a tax that does not hit rent, one of our major costs, or our mortgages, one of the major costs that we have in life. It does not hit food. So we are not increasing and gaining any revenue or increasing the cost on food. It does not hit medical costs. So one of our emergency costs, and as the elderly who have increased and added medical costs over time, it is not hitting those costs as well. It's not coming in on our car payments or in our gas purchases. I don't believe it's in our gas purchases, right?
Our gas.
No, not in our gas. So in many of our, for the working families, it's not hitting their means of getting to work. So what it really is hitting is a lot of those other staple purchases, those staple products, our cleaning supplies, our toiletries, our cosmetics and such. So what I've been looking at, because even though this is going to be the first tax that Silver has put forward in a long time, as it comes on the heels of county increase and such, our citizens are looking at a pretty good little cost. So even if we round that up to a 1% increase, ours is, this is specifically a quarter percent, but let's look at a 1% increase that our communities faced over this last couple of years. If they spend on those staple products, those cosmetics, those toiletries, those cleaning supplies and such, if they're spending $1,000 a month, which seems plausible for a family of four, family of five, usually with kids, it's very possible they're spending $1,000 on those items. They're looking at, their budget has increased $10. Only $2.50 based on this ordinance, but they're experiencing this over the last, so, but that's a very small, relatively small burden. And it's that realization that has led a lot of that input from those fixed incomers to me saying, you know, a lot of them have told me, we don't spend $1,000 on that. But if we did, an extra $10 is worth that museum, it's worth the library. It is, we need those items, our kids, our future, our, you know, we do not want to sacrifice this short-term burden for the future of our kids. We do not want to sacrifice this infrastructure, this burden where we just say we can't take on these grants to fix our roads, our sidewalks. We are not going to sacrifice that so that we end up with a dilapidated infrastructure that ensures that we have no economic growth or advancement. And that's a very important point that we want to see. In fact, I believe it's this future and it's this forward-thinking process and this cost-benefit analysis that has really led most of my business associates and contacts and those people I serve to also say it's vital for our business that you, that we maintain the level of service that we've had and that we continue to build upon that. We do need to work on this if we're going to be viable. And that's why, that's why I believe that the Chamber of Commerce did pass a resolution in support of this. So our business community has come out strongly in favor of this. Like I said, a lot of input from a lot of elderly people, a lot on fixed income have come personally to me. And I think they came to me personally because they thought I would presume they would be against it. So there's a lot of activity that, a lot of input that I've appreciated and it's made it easier since this is such a difficult ordinance to even put forward on my part. That being said, I want Alex to maybe go over some of the specific details and specifics of this ordinance.
Well, you hit everything. The nail on the head. The one thing that we often think about is, again, Silver City provides services to a much larger service area than just the residents of Silver City. So this burden isn't just being shared only by the residents of Silver City. This burden is being shared by the residents of Grant County, Southwest New Mexico in many cases, and all those tourists from all those events that come into our community. So yes, it is 25 cents for every $100. But that's if it's just you as a resident of Silver City that was spending it. Well, now we've got people from El Paso, Las Cruces, Tucson, coming in and sharing that burden. So the total amount of revenue generated is going to be around $700,000. And of that $700,000 that's generated, probably around $400,000 is generated by residents of Grant County, not just Silver City, but of Grant County. And the rest of it is generated by others that come into the community and spend their money. So on top of that, okay, now getting back to the grants and the issues with grants, I'm very proud to say that our staff is really good at getting grants and working on, and we have a really good reputation on getting grants. Now, the problem is getting reimbursed on our grants, and it's not because of submitting improper reimbursement material or us doing something wrong. It's just there's so much turnover, there's so many different things happening at the state level that it takes a long time to get reimbursed. You know, we need to continue to maintain our water infrastructure. If we don't go after those grants that help us maintain that and upgrade and work on that water infrastructure, who's going to have to pay for it? You are directly the water rate user. So by us going out and getting that money from the grant, that's alleviated that burden on our direct consumer. We get to the roads and those things. It's this bid right now. If we didn't bring in this $400,000, $500,000 in grants, who would have to come up with that money? It would be the people of Silver City or Grant County if we used gross receipts taxes. If it came down to property taxes, it would be directly impacted by residents of Silver City. So I mean, all those different cost-benefit issues have been weighed. And gross receipts is the most equitable way of going about maintaining, spreading the burden, because it is a burden. There's no doubt about it. So, you know, we have seen a decrease in revenue. We have cut back and kept from feeling some positions this year to offset some of that. But next year, no matter what happens, we're going to start seeing the decrease because of full term less. And that is going to just be, that is going to continue to happen. We can't avoid that. That's something that no matter what we do, it's going to happen. And so being ahead of the game by helping us increase our reserves, offset the whole term less right now, a little bit of it, it puts us in a much more stable position. I'm proud because Silver City does have a credit rating that we just confirmed. We have to do it every three years. We did it back in 2011. We went to New York and we met with the different rating agencies, Moody's, Fitch and S&amp;P. And we were given an A-plus rating, which is very good for a community our size. And it was just reconfirmed at an A-plus rating with no issues, no watches, positive or negative. So that did happen. So I feel that, you know what, the way that we're addressing our issues are, even the rating agencies who are very conservative these days are comfortable with what we're doing. And with that, I think that's all I have to say. Does somebody else want something, maybe to clarify anything?
Just a couple more clarifications. We've had some really good discussions in the past and there's been some questions and just want to make sure. The way that this increment works, because this is a defined tax within a very specific state law that actually allowed us to do this tax back in the 80s. But at that point in time, it wasn't necessary and we didn't need to, and I'm thankful for that. But in this specific, we can't cut this, correct? The response we've had before, and I'm under the presumption, it is, we have to do by this state act, the quarter percent.
Yes. Municipal gross receipts taxes is, municipalities were given six quarter percent increments. Unless you're a community of over 40, 45,000, then you can split it up into eighth of a percent increments. So we have no option other than to adopt a quarter percent.
Another, just, and this is a comment that I just thought of, you know, there was a very interesting comment and I appreciated it about whenever there's increases, should there be sunsets and such? And if I'm not mistaken, you know, us using, we're using this very specific ordinance that's drafted by the state, so, and it's not in there. But also, as I even thought about sunsets, usually that's very specific to projects. So when you're bringing a tax forward for a specific project, it's very common and appropriate to use a sunset clause to retract it when that, so that it goes away when the project's done. This is actually for our general fund. This is so that we can actually operate indefinitely. This is not to question the sunset. So in 10 years, we can decide whether we want to be a town or not.
Well, that happened with the public safety tax. And at that point, you know, we did go through an election to approve that tax and to ensure the public and show them and prove to them that we were going to use it for those specific purposes, which we still are and always will use it for. There was a sunset put on it. And then we had to bring it back to the elect for another election to show the public that we had used it for those specific purposes. And of course, it did pass last year to continue it, and it doesn't have a sunset though. You know, the one thing about these, all the taxes that are adopted by ordinance is that you can void the ordinance at any time. So for instance, say the state gets its act together and reimburs the tax system, and so that we can decrease taxes. Because it's done by an ordinance, you can repeal it. The ones that were adopted by, with the vote, we can't repeal it unless we take it back to the voters. So yes, there, in a sense, no, this is defined to general operations. So it's not specific to a project or a specific type of operation. It's just to run the general operations. But yes, we can wish the sunset. For instance, we could put, say, for instance, we issued a bond, well, the 2011 bonds, we did dedicate the fourth increment of this type of tax to the payment of those bonds. Well, we did not sunset the increment, but up until the date that those bonds are paid off, that increment is dedicated to pay off that debt. So at which time, if, once it's paid off, it will go back into general operations. But as any entity, you know, you want to combine, take every opportunity to bring funding into your community to maintain your infrastructure. And infrastructure exists just isn't street and roads. Infrastructure is our quality of life stuff. It's our people. It's, that's our infrastructure. And so being able to maintain that and have the money to, we pull from everywhere. I mean, we take every opportunity to get free money. And it's not free because, I mean, you say it's free, but somebody paid a tax to get that money out there to give it back to you. And when we all pay our taxes, hope, but, you know, so that, as much money as we can get back and use in our own community, the better.
Open it to the council. Councilor Besson?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that I said this actually when the NOI was introduced, that during the time that I was out campaigning for reelection, one of the things is, in the last about week and a half to two weeks of that, just before the election date, I would knock on someone's door and before I could say anything, the first question out of their mouth was, you're not going to take away the museum and the library. Please tax me. I don't want those services to be gone. And I said, well, it's more than that. And I would go through what the mayor and what the town manager has already explained is that this is not for new projects. This is for continuing to provide the quality and level of services that we have provided all these years. This is, I think it's been already stated that there's not a specific project for this. It goes into the general fund to be able to continue those services. And I think one of the really important things about this is we're not increasing yours and mine and everyone else's in the municipalities taxes on, I'm sorry, also my brain just stopped, property taxes. So I think it's really critical to understand that this is something that, it's the best way to spread the burden with, you know, when you think that 400,000 out of the 700,000 that would be generated by 25 cents on a $100 purchase that doesn't include food. I mean, I think it's really important it's not on food, as the mayor had stated, that it's that 400,000 generated with residents of Grant County. And not just the residents of Grant County come here. There are all those tourists, there are folks from Katrin County, from Luna, and from Hababoo that actually come here to purchase items. So I think that when we look at it overall, it's the best way of spreading the burden as best as we can without placing the burden just on our residents within the town through a property tax increase. So when I look at this, and all those people that talked to me when I was walking door-to-door, many of them were older than I was. And many, and then some of them had children that desperately wanted to make sure that our museum and library were maintained, that those services continued. There are people that talked about making sure that the roads and sidewalks can continue to be maintained, that our other services, such as fire, police, and our water and wastewater treatment plant, that we continue to ensure that those occur. I mean, we can go all the way down the line to everything that the general fund monies help run, in terms of especially maintaining the infrastructure. This is the, this is the money that we use for the town's portion of loans and grants, our contribution, correct? So.
Yes, we use this for match monies for all these grants. And that's what helps us leverage those additional funds.
And I have to say that if I put it into the number of people that supported this at that time, and I have not heard anything contrary, except for this evening, but folks that have called me and that have talked to me during that time when it came out in the paper, I would tell you that it was ten to one in favor of doing this, so that we could maintain our services. So if I am, as I said, to really be responsive to the individuals in District One, and to vote in terms of what those individuals in District One told me, right now, it's ten to one in favor of this ordinance. Because I did, because of the process that I was engaged in, did go door-to-door. And so I just want to make sure people know that I'm not making it up. I mean, literally, knocking on the door and the first thing out of their mouths was, "Please don't, please tax me, please make sure that those services are continued. Please make sure that our town continues as it is." And I think that's really important to note. So with that, thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't, I didn't keep track of how many people came and talked with me, and now I regret that. But I know within the last couple of weeks at least, twelve to fourteen people have approached me and wanted to talk about this tax. Out of those twelve to fourteen people, zero said that they thought that it was wrong to do. Every one of them said, "What services are in danger?" And at least half of them said, "Please don't do anything bad to the library. My kids go to library, I go to library. The library is really the front of knowledge in the town." So it's my duty to really take into account the will of the people, as has been noted. I begged those people to come to the council meeting tonight to speak. And they did. So that shows me something. So I'll have to correct it again. And just want to put something in perspective. I myself am a pretty avid reader, and I read on a Kindle. And I borrow between ten and twelve books a month from the library's database, where I can download a book, and my Kindle will keep it for three weeks. So if I were to buy those e-books, I would have to be shopping at Amazon, which does not pay, of course, and I would be paying Amazon anywhere between eighty and a hundred dollars a month. So the library is really saving me money. And so I have to, in all due consideration, really think that the tax is something that my constituents approve.
Councilor Redd.
Thank you, Mayor. I have been there a couple of times, and they don't have what I was looking for, and they have gone out of their way to get the books. And I really do appreciate that. We need the library. We need to have the services that are being provided by the town to the residents, not just Silver City, but all of Grant County. Police Department, the Fire Department, the Water Department. We don't want us to be polluted up. Any tax might be a burden to, it's a burden to everybody. And it's something that we have to do, as much as we don't want to do it, but we have to do it. So take into consideration that we're trying to do the best that we can. Mr. Brown, everybody here has talked about what needs to be done. And it, it has to be done. Thank you.
Councilor Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. I represent some of the poorer districts in Silver City, I mean, the poorer areas. And so I've been thinking about how I can approach it with some of my constituents. And the best way for me to do that is to tell you about myself. I receive social security. I get approximately seven hundred dollars a month, a little bit more. That comes out to a dollar seventy-five a month to keep the library, to keep the museum, to keep the roads being improved. And that's before I even pay rent, food, and medical, which is not taxed. So to me, it's the most minimal tax possible to continue the services that we have. And I would stand with three of you and agree that the constituents want this. I've heard from, I think, two people who are opposed, and one of them was this evening. So overwhelmingly, the people that are letting us know what they think are saying that they're for it.
Councilperson Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. There's one thing that I forgot. It's probably because I did not have something to eat before I came to council meeting. That was sort of a mistake, I think, because I'm starting to fade. But I want to assure folks in the town that there's no fiscal mismanagement of the town's finances and budget that has created this problem. It's already been stated by the mayor and by the town manager. There isn't. I mean, we have done, since I've been on the council, beginning in 2009, a number of things to make the town budget more efficient and effective. We have not necessarily filled positions as people have retired or left the town. We've done everything to streamline our budget and to make sure that it's going towards services. So I don't, I don't want anyone to ever think that this need that has been created has anything to do with any sort of fiscal mismanagement. For the last ten years, we've received glowing, no concerns on our audits.
Yes, and I'd like to state that, you know, before we even came to this point over the years, we've done everything we've been able to do to actually save money. The mayor and I were involved in a meeting today specifically, where through the process of installing the solar array at the wastewater treatment plant, it created the cost savings and avoided the cost increase in the future for the operation of the wastewater treatment plant. We finally got the gas station going. Everybody's finally, all the departments finally converted over. And the total cost of buying that property and upgrading the pumping facility so that we could use it was around three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I believe. No, three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The savings that we're going to receive from buying our own gas that's not taxed without any overhead cost is about one hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. We're going to get a payback in two years. And so, these are the processes that we look at all the time to try to avoid paying more for anything. And we will continue to do that. But even with those cost savings issues, we still are, this is our last resort.
Thank you, Mayor.
I will open it up to the public. Mr. Martinez.
I'm suffering some allergy, as I hear around the room, some of you are also. And, but working on that. You know, I certainly am one member of the public who appreciates the diligence of the city council, county commission, state legislature, and for all the good things that happen, we'll all be rewarded here or somewhere else, right? It's come. And sure, we want the positives. We go out there and we're in different circles. You know damn well we are. We're bound to be. Right? So then there are all these different perspectives that are present in this room alone. Where are the people? Where, oh, where are all the people? I'll come to that again in a moment. Because we need to know all the different perspectives and the points of view that exist in our little old community, everywhere. Before going any further, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and all the members of the council, and everyone for coming. In any case, we're together here and looking at all of this. Thanks. Art Martinez here, retired professor, activist. Not going to stop with this kind of work yet. I come at the behest of the committee to promote democracy for the common folks. You know them. La gente también. Even if there were to be considerable agreement to put up with yet another tax, and let's say to our world, our universe, that there may be another one coming, that rumor is already circulating, you may be back to get another one out of us, if you can. And so we may be suffering all these different matters for a longer time, even. But even if this were the case, as I said, if there was agreement to put up with another one at this time, for example, our committee does not believe, we do not feel that that does not, we feel that it does not mean, as a matter of fact, that it does not mean that such a tax should remain in place forever. If at all possible, not in place forever. You know, we don't like thinking about suffering forever by God. So consequently, you know, when we were together and talking about it, we agreed that we must come in here and urge that whatever can be done in order to get it done, if it's your purpose to pass this tonight, and I don't know that it would be in anyone's mind up there even that much to do so, we urge you to accept a place and automatic sunset provision. Now I know there are different views on that. We've heard several of them. And I like, I think some of you, maybe at the table, are not sure whether and how this could be made possible, but we're saying it. Put a sunset provision on it if it's possible, with an expiration timeframe of five to ten years, let's say, for purposes of the possible actions, on any future tax increase, on any future tax increase, times being the way they are in America and Grant County, our community, including the one we are considering here tonight, that would probably have to be done in an amendment form. Why not? Why not? Is everyone set in place already? That these things are not possible, perhaps? We were sitting and barnstorming together the other night, several of us. And we started looking at possible options that might be possible among ourselves, among you, with reference to how to get the funding necessary to run, to operate, to keep us afloat, and to assist those people who, of course, want the services. And there were several. I just want to share a couple of them with you. Now, I am, like many in our community and other places, not certain with reference to whether some of them could work or not, but here then, you've said, I think every one of you has said to me and to others, "We want to hear from you. We want to hear from you." By golly, if we could only hear from all the people all the time, we could make better decisions. So here, just, you know, I mean, we're not here to do an exchange either. You know, you always remind us that we're not here to do an exchange, debate of some sort. But if it's allowable, if it is appropriate, and I'm not quite sure, most of us weren't when we discussed it, maybe our municipality ought to lobby for a larger share of the That our state government, payment in lieu of taxes is what that says, PILT, that our state government receives from the federal government, we believe probably, it sends it out to the county, and the county can share with the municipalities and so forth, maybe we deserve a larger share of that. And perhaps we ought to do the same with reference toward receiving a larger share of what the state of New Mexico receives annually from tax receipts that come in from the mining production enterprises. Let's go for some of what they have. I was speaking with someone the other day, and they said that on the average, there's 2.2 million coming in annually. I was going to make mention with reference to those who are franchisees. They pay taxes. You get those taxes. We pay them. Because that is passed along to us. When they bring up the register, they're thinking of Art Martinez and Ben Ortiz and all of you. Ben Ortiz, and, uh, uh, all of you. But you know, it's, one of you mentioned a little while ago, that we go and we look into every possibility for getting a little bit here and a little bit there, and you're getting that, among other things, right? And there are all these different fees and stuff. Uh, do you have a, uh, a bank of grant writers? Get them to work. The answer is probably, "We're cutting staff." I don't know. But, uh, you know, there, there are some excellent grant writers, uh, inside the governmental entities, as you say, the political jurisdictions, uh, that we have. And, uh, but those, you know, are, are, are a few things, and... It would have been a very nice, respectful gesture for this council, county commission too, to have made it possible for our residents, la gente pobre, and the general public, to have made it possible for our residents to cast their sacred vote for or against the imposition of this tax, so very regressive that it is. That 25 cents, that's the same thing that the manager out at, uh, the mine pays, that I pay, and you pay, and you. Ross Perot would pay the same tax coming through the line at Walmart that I do and you do. And los pobres que estaban, están ahí afuera, viendo cómo van a apagar la luz, el gas, el agua. And you know what? Five or six bucks means a lot to them. I'm not holding anyone here personally responsible for anything that, uh, I'm not singling you It's, I guess, uh, part of it is where government does, is today, all over, and we're suffering Our committee to promote democracy is troubled. We've been troubled, certainly over the last couple of months, we've been troubled, that very few local residents have come forward to ask our local political officials a couple of questions, or more. We need, um, our residents very much, extremely so. Some of you have said so tonight. Quick, some of the questions with regard to our local financial crisis and in this region, let's say. What went wrong? What went wrong? Why did it go so damn wrong and so long? How has it come to pass? We ask you, how has it come to pass that we seem to have politically drifted along toward a possible economic disaster in this corner of Nuevo Mexico? Let's really ask ourselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Any other public comments? We have one. You'll be next.
Good evening. Alex, Robert, Ann, Mayor, councilors, thank you for your time. Take a breath. I just heard, um, "Where are the people?" And I often wondered that myself. I, I remember back in the fall, at the county commissioner meeting, uh, when Council Bedesen was there as mayor pro tem, and where are all the people to speak up against this raising of the TRT, 3 eighths? I was the only citizen that got up and spoke. There was no discussion. There was an immediate vote afterwards, no explanation, nothing. And I sat here tonight, and I'm just, I'm so thankful for each and every one of you, your knowledge, your intellect, the time, your listening, that you would go through and explain this. It was just, was really wonderful. The contrast between the two was pretty amazing. You know, "Where are the people?" I remember the day I was at, uh, with Council Raymond Smith, just for a few hours at, uh, Western New Mexico, when everyone was there to present their projects and fund, for funding and capital outlay at, at the university, in front of all the legislators. "Where are the people?" There were 75 people at the Roundhouse in Santa Fe to talk about their projects, to lobby and talk to senators and representatives, and, you know, just a lot of passion, and pretty much told early in the morning, "Sorry, there's not gonna be much money available. We're not gonna be able to do anything." And as we've heard tonight, there really was no capital outlay. Everyone talked about "Hold harmless" that day. Nothing's happened about that. So once again, not only in New Mexico, but I find across the country, municipalities have to bear the burden. They're the ones that have to take up the fight. It doesn't happen from the federal government, it doesn't happen a lot from the state government, so it's like, "Good luck, you guys, fend for yourselves." So it comes down to a painful thing that you have to do. And I think of, you know, "Where are the people?" We vote. If we're not happy with you, if we're not happy with the job you're doing, we're not, you're not gonna get our votes. I don't know why people, more people don't speak up, but they don't. But I am so thankful that we have such a wonderful, wonderful staff, and wonderful councilors, and wonderful mayor that we have in City, in Silver City, uh, that you do just incredible work. And it's really sad that it has come, has come to this. Back to the county commissioners, their 3 eighths of percent that went up, that was basically for projects, not really for services so much. And once again, it's like, it really blew me away that day that there was no discussion, no explanation, they just took the vote. And so the, the time that you've taken tonight to try and, you know, people, you know, ease the pain, because I know it's not a wonderful thing to do. Anyone faced with a decision like this doesn't wanna do it, but you need to, and you have to. So for ordinance 1237, I fully support a yes vote.
Uh, Racket, you... Please go to the microphone.
As a reporter, I just feel like I have to ask a question about something that, uh, doesn't seem to have been mentioned tonight, except in passing by Councilor Bedesen. And, and my question is, uh, have you looked at all the town's services, staff, and projects, and decided there is nowhere that cuts can be made to achieve fiscal balance?
And we'll, and I'll let, I'll let the public continue, but I'm gonna, I'll be, I'll be trying to answer a number of these questions. So I have yours, that written down, I have some other questions that I'll try to answer to the best of my ability.
I'm Sissy McAndrew. I'm here tonight as a citizen, and I also wanna commend the council, the mayor, the staff. Uh, I, every single day, am downtown. On the average, I talk to 50 to 100 people. I think that's just really, that's fun. Uh, and I, I also am hearing very positive comments. Uh, when I hear people that are not happy about it, it's because they don't have the facts. And it sure has not been the fault of the media. You've been doing an absolutely wonderful job. I don't know how we can do a better job of educating the people. Um, I appreciate the, the website that the town has, and we need, we need to keep the gross receipts tax and lodgers tax information updated. I think right now it's, it's through November, but I mean, people come watch that and see that, that we're not where we were before, uh, and now we have this loss of additional funding coming in. Uh, it costs money to do business. Uh, every day I'm talking to people that are looking at moving to our community, or people that are living here, and we love it. And the reason we love it is because of the foresightedness that the council has had, the leadership that you've taken, the sustainability that's in place. We look at simple payback. We're logical. We use common sense. And that's really what this tax is really down to. Yet we've gotta do something. We can't stand by, we can't wait. I know the town has been looking at absolutely every possible way of operating more efficiently. You, we hear about it, we see it. But when we are sitting here in concern about a quarter of a, of a percent tax, I just wanna remind you another thing that's coming down the pipe, and I sure hope everyone will show up for this, and that is when we start getting rate increases on utility bills. When the electric bill starts going up, that's gonna hit everybody, and we better see everybody standing at the podium, talking to P and M, talking to the Public Regulation Commission, they're coming to town this week. But it's like, we are the people, we are the voice, we need to stand up and speak for ourselves and speak in a unified front. But it's getting more expensive every day for us to live, and more expensive every day to run this town, and thank goodness we live here, and thank goodness you make the decisions you do. And I encourage you to vote by in passing of this ordinance. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? That being said, um, try to go, I'll go through some of my, um, answers and maybe even further questions. Um, oftentimes I try to answer some of these que, uh, these questions through other questions, and I apologize for that. You know, um, the, the question, "Did we look at town, at, at, at the town staff and the projects and everything?" Uh, you know, when I make my comments that I think I'm about a year late, is, this is something that we were heavily discussing and debating. There, there was a lot of, um, movement to, to get this done, to actually start looking at this last year, and even before that. And all we've been doing is looking at staff, looking at projects, looking at everything. We have been, for the last several years, and, and very particularly this last year, how do we avoid this? Mainly because I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna be up here bringing this. So we've been, we've been struggling and, and researching every possible position, and, uh, and as Alex has mentioned before, you know, there is a, a human side of this, um, running on a, without a full staff, and, and we are, we're, we're not at full staff. And not because we're not meeting our budget, but because we're floating these grants and such like that is, is why we're not at full staff. It is wearing on our staff. Our, our staff is, um, stressed and pressured, and, and they're, they're very much struggling meeting their basic duties because they're covering other people and, 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 uh, doing more than the, than the tasks that are directly related to their job. And, and we are, we are in danger of losing people for that. There, there's, we have a lot of staff that are, that could get probably an equally, uh, good job with less work, where basically they're just getting paid to do the job, or they're, they're, they're doing the job that they're getting paid for and not extra, that we've, um, we've stressed our human resources and, and to the, to the best of our ability. And, and, and we've overdone that. I, like, like I said, in, in many cases, I take ownership in that. I have put this town in a huge burden in human resources because I wanted to avoid this. In fact, and right now, and even though I'm not avoiding it now, and I'm pushing it forward, and I'm, and I'm the one that put this forward, I take ownership in doing this now, but I actually take responsibility for allowing us to be as stressed as we've been over this last year and before. Going beyond that, we've, we've talked at, in depth, and we've discussed it even here, even in my opening, um, in the opening of the NOI a couple months, a, a month ago, at the last meeting, even in, uh, some, some council comments, we've been talking, and over the last few years, we've been talking about what went wrong. We've been doing the same thing that we've always been doing. We, we haven't been doing extra. We're, we're still providing the same services, these services that are, that are potentially at a loss, um, that, that we would have to cut had we, if we, uh, continue on this path. It's, uh, and I apologize, I lost track. You know, it's, in, in, when we're discussing what went wrong, it's, that, you know, in running the thing, the, the town, in the manner we've been doing, and, and providing those services that have been around for decades and decades, and not having, and being, and relying on money, and maybe we shouldn't have been relying, even for, for several decades, maybe we should not have been relying on the state, on, uh, them, we, we should have known maybe a long time ago that they were, that they were gonna take away what they had given us for, for decades, and, and never got into these services. Had we never put in a museum, never put in a library, um, we wouldn't, we wouldn't really be worried. If we would have said, you know, "I know the state's gonna take something away, so, so let's not even start providing these services." Well, I would speculate, we would not be the town we are today. We would not have the population we have today, we would not have, uh, the economy we have today. So we took for granted that the state was gonna allow, was, continue to pass on monies that, uh, historically speaking, were started by municipalities. Once upon a time, municipalities collected their own tax, and then the state said, "Hey, we can manage that better, so we're gonna be your agency, and you have to deal with it." And then, incidentally, and then as history goes, they actually say, you know, "Even though you as a municipality put these taxes in place, you know what, now that we're controlling it, we're not gonna share that tax with you." There, there's a number of taxes like that that have been taken away, so maybe we should have had, been more aware and had a little bit more foresight. But, uh, like with this whole "Hold harmless," when they made their change, um, a decade ago, and, and politically, I understand what, why they were motivated to make their change on, on not taxing food and, and medical. But when they decided to hold us harmless for their decision, maybe we did take it for granted that, uh, they were gonna hold us harmless, they were gonna hold us harmless forever, especially since. They increased taxes 5 eighths of a, of a percent to pay us that "Hold harmless." Maybe we took it for granted that they were actually gonna keep that 5 eighths dedicated to that purpose. Now that they're, and maybe we should have, we shouldn't have taken it for granted that we were gonna have a state government that was gonna say, "You know what? We will not raise taxes. Hey, but you legislators over there, since we're not gonna raise taxes, you guys need to find some ways to, uh, to, that, that we can keep and continue to grow and, and meet inflation and, and do our thing without raising taxes, and we don't care who you undercut, and the low-hanging fruit happens to be us." So that 5 eighths tax, that was increased specifically to take care of us and hold us harmless for their decision. Now, it's just going to be used for all those purposes that they need to use it for without raising taxes. So... So what have they done? They've effectively raised the tax. And in fact, in this day and time of state government saying, no new taxes, they have created an environment that we are seeing probably the most tax increase, probably, historically speaking. And even though I said that, what went wrong? You know what, I take ownership in that. I did not see that coming. I, you know, I take full responsibility for not having that foresight and not doing something different. But I am at a point where to meet my obligations and meet my constituents' needs and to see that Silver City continues on a stable path that's economically vibrant, so that not only I can live and enjoy my time here, so that my kids and possibly my grandkids actually have a community that has the appropriate infrastructure and everything. I've got to also take ownership and responsibility for ensuring that they have the funds to see this community through and forward into the future. I can't just think about what I want right now. And I take full responsibility and ownership in that, and I just hope that I can get some Voting on an increase, we've already heard that if we were to pass this on to the citizens of Silver City to vote on this ordinance, that we actually push this, the timing of that would push this off, a potential tax increase, which is, so far, what I've seen is very popular. If we push it off another year, and we become in much worse condition, but we would be kicking the can down the road, if you will. I've actually heard that there's a lot of county residents that would like us to put it to the county vote as well, but that's not going to happen. It's a city tax. It's only, it would only even be possible to do so with city voters. But we've actually, as we've talked about, we have had the community come in droves. Maybe not to this public meeting, but they've been going to staff and talking, they've been going to the councils and talking, they've been coming to me directly and talking about it. We have heard a number of people. And as I said, we do, and I appreciate the point, we do run in different circles. That's one of the beauties of having a five-member council in the four districts and having such a diverse makeup of this council, is so that we get as many of those groups as possible here to talk to us and so that we can listen and make the most informed decision we can and help our constituents and the town as a whole. And I believe we've probably all, we've all heard from a number of people, we've all heard from different groups. And as I've mentioned before, there's been people coming and talking to me that I did not expect to come and talk to me, that are not part of my group. And I think they believe that they know that they're not part of my group, and they intentionally came to speak to me and speak in favor of it, generally speaking. Pilt money and state share mining enterprises, that's a good idea, I think we should. I don't believe it's possible. I don't believe it's possible, but it's something that we can look at, because it also gives us the opportunity to, if something like that materializes, those specific items may or may not be available, I don't believe they are. But if they were, or something like that is available, it actually allows future councils to potentially cut the tax. And quickly, as was mentioned before, if we vote in a tax, even with a sunset, we have it throughout the duration of that sunset or whatever. If we vote in this ordinance now, and we find we don't need it next year, we can undo this. Is that likely? You know, I'm a realist. How many times have we seen taxes cut? Not very often, except for at the federal and state levels where it's much more politically popular. And when they do so, they like to push it down to us. But I also want to take ownership as us, as a community. I want to have the community have the money. I want us, Silver City, having the money that is pooled by the community, that these are community funds that we can decide upon, and we can work from and develop and see how we can improve the lives of everybody of all walks of life. We control it. And then, as we do that, we get to face our friends, family, and neighbors. We're not like the state legislator and the federal legislatures who have to listen, who get to vote however they want, or basically vote to get more votes on the politically popular stuff, and never have any interest or ever have to hear from their constituents. What we do is, we have to face, like I said, our friends, family, and neighbors. And believe me, I've been cussed at and yelled at outside my office, but I accept that, because that is me. I want to take responsibility for what I do, because, and I'm proud to do that, and I'm proud to accept those burdens, because I believe in my heart, I'm doing what's going to be best for my children and my grandchildren to enjoy and live in a good, healthy community. Now, I didn't necessarily answer every question directly, but I think I've hit points that touch on everything. Now, I'll open it up to the council for further discussion and debate. Councilor Madison.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, as has been said before, it's something that we don't necessarily want to do, and it's unfortunately, one of those necessary evils. I think that the first time this was presented to the council was in a budget, when we did our budget hearing, it must have been at least three years ago, if not more, about what we thought to might happen. And as the mayor has indicated, we, all of us, with our reticence to increase taxes, it is our responsibility that we've created this situation now, where we have to do it now, rather than, probably, we should have done it earlier, just so that we wouldn't be in the, we wouldn't have placed our staff in a position that they've been, where they've been, overburdened themselves with doing multiple tasks, multiple jobs, but being paid for one. People are doing as much as they can with less already, and to reduce it anymore, we would not be the town that we are. One of the issues that's been brought up again, but I thought that it had been explained sufficiently, is that the way this tax structure is, it's designed to buy the state, so state staffs are actually limits us in what we can do. So we cannot add a sunset, where sunset cannot be added, but we can if in the future, we find we don't need this tax, we can repeal the ordinance. But, I mean, I'm usually an optimist, but in this case, I'll be more pessimistic about the fact, because I'm really very fiscally conservative. I don't see this tax going away in the near future unless the state can get it together to reimburse us in a timely fashion, like it used to be over five years ago, where we receive timely payments for reversals of our grants. And because I think people understand, we don't get that money upfront, folks. We don't get a $400,000 grant upfront. We actually have to pay for it and ask for reimbursement. That's the problem here. So that we are already using up our cash reserves. As we stretch out over all the number of grants that we have, they're not 100%, plus you have to put the money out front. It's just like geo-bonds that are done at the state level, the expenditure has to occur, and then you ask for reimbursement from the state. There is no direct payment of these monies. So I think it's really important to note that it's a catch-up situation, I mean, we're running to catch up consistently at this rate. So much so that I think it was mentioned at the last meeting, the first meeting in March, that for the first time in known history, we were penalized for a late payment to a contractor. Correct?
Yes, and the payment came directly from the state.
Oh, it did, so we didn't have to put that out.
Yeah, it didn't come from, the state made the payment to the contractor, and they paid them.
Oh, that's right. But we still have the $20,000 bill.
Yeah, we still have the penalty payment that we have to pay.
So we still have to pay the penalty. The state doesn't pick up their problem. Yeah. Because it's still, we're the ones that work with the contractor directly.
The contractor is between us and the contractor.
Correct. So thank you for clarifying that. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands also, that like other taxing situations, statute demands that it be written in a certain manner. There are certain things that we can't add in. It has to be done in a very specific way, so that it goes through the proper channels. This is not a flexible one, and most of them aren't. They're very, the structure is very specific, and I know that our attorney and clerk have to follow that structure, as dictated by statute. So as much as we might want to do something, there's no parameters within which, it's not allowable. We can't necessarily do that. The only thing we can do is something that I don't think is ever going to stop, that they're rolling downhill. Remember, it goes from the state, from the federal government to the state, and then it slides really fast down to us. I don't think that that's ever going to stop, but as ever the optimist, I hope that it will someday actually become where they understand that the decisions that they make at the state level impact municipalities greatly. And it's not that we don't have an effective lobbying organization, which is the New Mexico Municipal League, which I sit on the board of, it's just that they don't necessarily ask the league to come to the table at every opportunity, or listen. Just like we want, you know, I mean, I'm just saying that it's powerful, it's 105 municipalities, and we're all out there saying, please don't do this, but when the push comes to shove, it just keeps rolling downhill. And unfortunately, it's going to roll downhill to you and me and every other taxpayer. That, I mean, that's, it's an unfortunate, and it's not a cycle, it's a string-going-downhill type thing. There's no way to bring it back up around unless we can overall change the way everything works in a way that it actually is more fiscally responsible. I think that one of the things that the mayor said is really critical, we live in your community. We do hear it. Yes, I did go out and speak to every single person that would open the door to me when I was out running for reelection. Yes, I did get those comments directly. People don't necessarily show up here, but they are coming. That's unlike our state legislators, not every legislator that is part of, has Grant County constituents, actually lives in Grant County. We're fortunate that our senator does, and we're fortunate that one of our representatives does as well. But I can tell you that at the federal level, how many, I mean, they only live in one community. They don't necessarily hear us. So here, yes, we will, we are listening. And I do have an open-door policy in terms of, you can call me anytime, you can email me, I will get back to you. I've always been very responsive to the constituents, it doesn't matter if they're in District One or if they're elsewhere across the town. I am responsive. Yes, I get stopped at Walmart. Yes, I get stopped when I'm out in town. But I think it's really important to realize that we hear, we live this, we also face whatever taxes we increase. And while I do have a full-time job at the university, I can tell you that I still live month to month because of paying for student loans that I took out to complete my education, and for any number of things that I've done, my mortgage, things like that. So this will impact me. It will be a burden to me, as it will be to all of you. On the other side, because of that impact, and because of the way state retirement is for folks that are part of the educational retirement fund, I don't anticipate that I'll be able to retire when I would like to or when I'm able to. I expect I will be working for a very long time to survive. So I think it's critical that you understand that just because I may live in District One, or of who I am, and that I'm very visible in the community, that I too have to manage my budget, what little I have, and make sure that I appropriately pay my taxes and do everything else that I need to do to continue to work for all of you as an elected official. So that's my spiel. Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have anything, Councilor? Councilor Amosman?
I only have one thing. Mr. Mayor, I really do wish that more people would come and speak in the public, but until we can get them to come, yeah, this is what we have, people speaking to me privately, and people speaking to me on the streets. My, one of the eldest persons who spoke to me was 87, and one of the youngest was, I would put her at 15. And again, they understood the importance of us maintaining our services. And I just want to also make it really clear that this is a volunteer council. We don't get paid for the work that we do, the research we do, the many, many committee meetings that we're in. And I just want to say, Dr. Martinez, I too am a retired professor and activist, and I would love to come to your committee meeting at some time. So just invite me.
Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at this tax increase, it has here that all general fund operations are going to be affected. We've got to take into consideration also that things break down, the machine, the backhoes, the water lines, so those are things that aren't foreseen, that will cost them money. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add, Alex?
Our inner kind of motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Amosman?
I move to approve ordinance number 1237, an ordinance adopting a municipal gross receipts tax in the amount of one-fourth of one percent, .25 percent for general fund operations.
Councilor Ray?
I second that motion, if ready.
We have a motion, a second, for approval of ordinance number 1237, an ordinance adopting a municipal gross receipts tax in the amount of one-fourth of one percent, .25 percent for general fund operations. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir, sir.
We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. Throw call.
I'm.
Councilor Amosman?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Condon?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda under new business, approval, disapproval of bid number 14/15-4 Street and Drainage for Phase Two of Silver Street. Mr. Brown?
Hello, Council. The town received two bids for bid 14/15-4 Silver Street ADA and roadway improvements. We received a bid from Southwest Concrete Paving as well as Deming excavation. The low bid was Deming excavation at $278,335.65 for the base cost, plus gross receipts taxes. And I'm not going to use the numbers that's in the packet, because that'll change as the project goes on, because they will be impacted by the tax increase. Now, I do want to state that this is being paid through Colonial Sprint. The town did receive, was awarded $489,623. So this is far below what the funds available for the project. So as part of the award... So as part of the award, as far as the motion, I would request that you authorize us to negotiate to increase the scope of the project, because this is phase two of a three-phase project. The original phase of this project was Silver Street from 32nd Street to Pine. This one is from Pine to Lab Street. We believe we might be able to get down to 19th Street with the remaining funds. So we, but we would have to go through a process of going to the Colonial's Board to authorize us to expand the scope of the project to go get down to 19th. So if we just had this motion authorizing the award of this project and with the ability to negotiate up to the grant funding, then that would just give us the leeway to just move forward and get final approval from the Colonial's Board. And once we got that, then we would increase the scope of the project and just go to construction.
Councilor Edison?
So you, if I believe correctly, just quoted the base bid. You didn't add the additive alternative?
No, this is it. This is what is going in the entire project.
Okay, so on what I have, looking at, you said the $278 for the base bid, and then there's the additive, yes?
I'm sorry.
And the total is without gross receipts?
Yes, so it's total, I'm sorry, this was a little bit of a conversation. I would recommend that we award the base bid plus the additive number, as well as allow us to negotiate up to the $489,623 that was awarded in the grant. Thank you for catching that.
Councilor Condon?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of bid number 14/15-4 street drainage for phase two of Silver Street, including the base bid and the additive alternative number one, and also authorizing the town staff to negotiate the expansion of the scope of the project up to the funding total.
Councilor Amos Smith?
I second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, for approval of bid number 14/15-4 street and drainage for phase two of Silver Street, base bid of $278,335.65 and additive number one, for a total amount of bid of $303,146.65, and also authorizing staff to negotiate the expansion, to expand the scope of the project up to grant funding total.
Do you need any contractor?
Yes.
Yes, it's a moving information.
Also included, it would be ordered to deming and expanding.
For staff recommendation?
Yes, for staff recommendation.
Second. Second amendment.
So just so I can, so we're all on the same page, we have approval of bid number 14/15-4 street and drainage for phase two of Silver Street, two deming excavating ink per staff recommendation in a total amount of bid which includes base bid and additive alternative number one, a total amount of $303,146.65, which does not include GRT, and also authorize staff to negotiate to expand scope of project up to the grant funding total. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question. Mr. Brown, is there any contribution by the town in the Colonial's grant that were received?
Yes, we did have a match of a footrest engineer that was already done.
And it was already done, and can you tell us?
It was $78,000.
So that $78,000 match is one of those things that the town is required to do when they receive a grant?
Yes, we already did that over, because we've been working on this project for so long, we had the entire street, we had, I believe, 60% design, and then with the $78,000, we got it up to 100%. So, yes, we've done that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is discussion and vote on changing the regular council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 28, 2015, to Thursday, April 23, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. at the Grant County Administration Center. This is to accommodate so that we can have a full council on our last meeting. Councilor Edison will be out of town and actually out of communication, so she wouldn't even be able to dial in, so we want to, we always like to have a full council. Any discussion? Councilor Edison?
I just want to mention that I actually won't be on vacation. I'll be attending a work-related conference that's back-to-back from the 24th through the 29th, so it's not, that's not necessarily vacation for me. So, and unfortunately, as the mayor stated, I will not be able to communicate, given the nature of the conference during the evening. I'll be two hours ahead of the council and also will be attending an evening event that evening at the conference, so, thank you.
I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Edison?
I move to change the regular council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April 28, 2015, to Thursday, April 23, 2015, at 6:00 p.m., to be held at the Grant County Administration Center.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Second motion is due.
We have a motion, a second, to change the regular council meeting scheduled Tuesday, April 28, 2015, to Thursday, April 23, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. at the Grant County Administration Center. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Edison?
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion, a second, for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.